All right. Good evening, everyone. We'd like to go ahead and welcome you to the Fruta City Council meeting. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. The time is now 7:01 PM. Shannon, would you please call roll?
Sure, Councilor Hansi.
Here.
Councilor Miller.
A present. Sorry, I'm not used to you in this direction.
Councilor Cry.
Here.
Uh, Councilor Williams. Councilor Perser. And Councilor Bremen.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our moment of silence and pledge of allegiance. If you'd please stand with us. We'd like to take the opportunity to have a moment of silence to outlaw all face and believe the opportunity for a silent prayer. Thank you. If you'd please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda?
Uh, no changes, Mr. Mayor.
All right, then do we have a motion to approve?
I already moved to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Shannon, would you please poll council?
Councilor Bremen.
Yes.
Councilor Perser.
Yes.
Councilor Williams. Councilor Cry.
Aye.
Councilor Miller.
Bremen.
Councilor Hansi.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, we do not have any proclamations or presentations tonight, so we're going to move into public participation. So this is time that's set aside for the council to listen to comments from the public on items that do not appear on the agenda. Uh, we'd ask that you limit your uh, question or limit your comments to three minutes. So if there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on an item not on the agenda, now's your opportunity. All right, if you please come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Um, my name's Mackenzie Kimball and I am 177 North Apple Street. And I am up here just to talk to you a little bit about Fruta for Equality. Karen and I have made a plan to try to come and give you all an update quarterly. Um, our organization promotes and supports equality, inclusivity, and diversity through meaningful conversation and action in our community. And we currently have a poster project going on in town. You know, some of you all have some of our posters in your windows of the businesses, but we just wanted to let you all know to go check out really cute art from kids at Rimrock Elementary. We had close to 400 students participate, which was almost the entire school. And it took 44 businesses in Fruta to host all of those posters. So over the interstate here in downtown, it's really cool to see that many out and about, and they all wrote about what makes them smile in Fruta. A lot of them were like Greta and the actual city of Fruta logo, surprisingly. So um, if you need to pick me up, counselors, definitely go walk about town and see what they love about our community. And all the kiddos got these really cute I Love Fruta stickers designed by Andrea that she did as a donation for us. So they can also take pride in our community. Um, and then we have a website finally. So if you know anyone that might be interested in participating or building some community, it's just frutaforequality.org. And we're trying to keep it up to date with our um, monthly second Wednesday meetings as well as like we have a bunch of pictures of the posters and cute things like that up there. So if you know anyone that might be interested in attending these like open conversations we host or just wants to participate, send them there and there's a contact us page as well. Um, so we just wanted to give you all that update and hopefully it brings you a little joy when you see some cute little posters around town. And if you have any other questions, there's like I said, the contact us page, but we're really excited for some upcoming events, like hopefully a partnership with the city of Fruta for a conversation about our local community. So.
Hey, we normally don't ask questions, but I just wanted to ask one. Did you get information to Ciara on what you're doing?
Yes, and we actually posted on their Instagram with some of the ones specific about like the police department making them smile and the rec center and a bunch of the things that you all do that make the kids really happy. So yeah, we're trying to keep everyone in the loop so that the city knows what's what's going on too.
Well, we appreciate it. Well, thanks for coming in tonight. Is Karen going to come up too for three minute? No. Well, we can trust you to stay under three minutes. All right. Is there anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? All right, hearing none, we're going to close public participation and move into our consent agenda. So these are all items where all conditions or requirements have been agreed to or met prior to the time. They can be for council. They'll all be approved by one motion. So we're going to open this up to public comment. If there's anybody that would like to speak on an item that's on the consent agenda, now is your opportunity. All right, hearing none, we're going to close consent agenda to public uh, comment and bring it back to council. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
I just wanted to, I'm grateful that we can uh, vote on the resolutions um, 2024 11 and 10. I think that's, it'd be nice to get our voice out to the to the front range and contribute to the community to say let things stay local.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Or do we have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Shannon, would you please poll council?
Uh, Councilor Perser. Councilor Bremen.
Yes.
Councilor Williams.
Yes.
Councilor Cry.
Aye.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
And Councilor Hansi.
Yes.
I like it though. Keep it up, buddy.
Motion passes six zero.
You got my support, sir.
All right, with that, um, our next item is we just want to acknowledge we had a couple of boards and uh, commissions appointments um, on here. Actually, we had several on here. And so we just wanted to thank those. Uh, I know we have some here that uh, are um, newly appointed to our boards and we just appreciate the willingness to serve our community because it really helps us as council with more feedback uh, and getting the community involved. So we just want to thank those that are uh, being appointed and reappointed to our boards tonight. Um, with that, we're going to move into our, um, we've got uh, two legislative hearings tonight. So our first one is ordinance 2024-11. It's a second reading. Uh, it's amending uh, section 3.18.240 of the Fruta Municipal Code. And it looks like we've got our city manager, Mike Bennett, here to present on this one.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, uh, members of council, uh, and the and those in the audience. Shannon and I, our assistant city manager, myself, the city manager, um, trying to cover for our city clerk and our deputy city clerk uh, on election day today. So they are busy uh, with the end of ballots being submitted by seven o'clock so that they can do their job to to wrap up those results. So I'm gonna uh, do a quick presentation on this and and simply this is your second reading on uh, amending, this is ordinance 20, whoops, let's see, I better not touch my screen. It moves too fast. All right, uh, this is ordinance 2024-11, our second reading to amend section 3.18240 of the Fruta Municipal Code concerning membership requirements for the Tourism Advisory Council. And simply the only, the changes here are to remove the city council member from the member, from the membership of voting members. Uh, and then there's a very, you can see it in all caps uh, there to uh, that city council shall appoint a non-voting city council liaison to the Tourism Advisory Council uh, following each election. And so this is in line with the changes that you're making. Some are by ordinance, some are by resolution, depending on each board or commission. From a decision and direction that the city council had given staff to make the transition for all uh, all of our boards and commissions to have a council liaison that's non-voting. Uh, because simply every board or commission, when they make final decisions, is recommending to this body, a city council who does make the vote on those final decisions and direction to the the boards to uh, to move forward. So I'm happy to take any questions after the uh, public comment if.
All right. Thanks, Mike. With that, we're going to open up the public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? Uh, now would be your opportunity. All right, hearing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Does anybody have any questions or comments related to this item? I'm not hearing any. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve uh, 2024-11 ordinance amending section 3.18.240 of the Fruta Municipal Code. By the removal of the city council representative from the membership of the advisory council and adding a city council representative to serve as liaison to the advisory council.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, Shannon, would you please poll council?
Council Cry.
Aye.
Council Williams.
Oh.
Council Williams, or I mean, Council Miller. I know. Council Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Perser.
Yes.
Councilor Hansi.
Yes.
And Councilor Bremen.
Yes.
Motion passes five to one.
All right, with that, so we're going to move into our resolution 2024-12. Um, and it's public hearing amending the 2024 budget with supplemental appropriations. We've got Shannon Vassen here, our assistant city manager, to present.
Uh, as always, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council for the opportunity to present. Resolution before you is a supplemental appropriation of funds in the general fund, the capital projects or the marketing promotion fund and the sewer fund to appropriate funds for three specific purposes um, as outlined in the cover sheet and resolution. Um, as with any supplemental budget amendment, I add a graph at the end of the cover sheet to kind of show what we'll use those funds for. And like I was saying, we have three of them included in it. So I'll just start with the one on the general fund. Um, staff is requesting a hundred thousand dollars to uh, have some uh, on-call design engineering work. Um, as you know, we have a very large capital project list. Um, we have a strategic plan. We also have a five-year uh, capital improvement plans. And within the past couple of years, we've had some difficulty completing some of those capital projects for miscellaneous reasons, you know, the market, um, supply chain issues, et cetera, have contributed to some of that. But also we've gotten behind as we've have so many projects on engineering right away acquisition uh, for some of these things. So we are asking for a hundred thousand dollars to um, have some on-call engineering and design services for projects that are on our capital improvement plan, but um, not yet funded. So we can get them more ready to be shovel-ready and also uh, more ready to be competitive for grants if we were to apply for them. A few examples of this, we're adding a ADA ramp, um, hopefully adding an ADA ramp on the north side of this building eventually. We have to pay for design work of that. We've also talked about the crosswalk on Cherry, right by Family Health West and the community center. We'll do some design work for that. So this will just appropriate funds. So we do have the ability to uh, have some on-call engineering services. Um, marketing and promotion fund, we have $5,000 being requested from the Fruta Tourism Advisory Board um, to fund the mini-grant program. Um, council approved, uh, re-approved the mini-grant program in 2019, and each year they have funded this at $4,000 per year. This is a program that allows businesses, um, local community members, the ability to apply for up to a thousand dollars of funding for either events in Fruta or uh, marketing promotions in Fruta. And for the first time since 2019, we've actually spent down all of that money. And actually, we've spent over the 4,000. So we're here asking for forgiveness instead of permission. But uh, the F-TAC has appropriated uh, $4,500 in grants. Um, one to the Fruta Chamber, a thousand dollars for the reprint of the um, the map and guidebook. We've also given $500 to Carl Canyon's Association to reprint maps at all the McGinnis Canyon National Conservation Area Trailheads. Uh, we approved a thousand dollars for a softball tournament that we'll be hosting at the end of May at Little Salt Watch Park. Um, we also approved a thousand dollars for a fundraiser for the Carl National Monument Association. And at our meeting last Thursday, they recommended funding for, oh geez, one more event I'm trying to, oh, Ride of the Rockies to help with some of their expenses as they have. So 4,500, they're asking for another five. Again, we won't spend that money unless we get applications for them. Uh, final budget item is uh, a request for $200,000 to replace and install new computer equipment at the wastewater reclamation facility um, for our skater replacement. Um, our Public Works Department has done a tremendous job kind of finishing up with a lot of the projects on our sewer needs assessments. Um, over the past couple of years, and this is kind of the next one on the list of things to get done at the plant. Um, basically this will install all on new, all onsite equipment um, for the skater system, which you know, helps with uh, cybersecurity, you know, software updates. We have the ability to control um, and see kind of everything what's happening as far as, you know, output of some of the stuff at the sewer reclamation facility. So this is a big project and one that they're very excited about uh, to do and to get in compliance with uh, some of these new cybersecurity requirements we have. Our Public Works Director has done a tremendous job at getting grant funds for a number of projects. Last year, we got $600,000 for our aeration project. They also last year, I think we got 900,000 for our H2S project as well, which was an initial 600 and then 300 as a supplemental. Since we've had savings or we haven't had to use as much of the city's funding for that, this just uses 200 of the $600,000 we would have otherwise spent on the aeration project. Always happy to answer questions after public comment. That concludes my presentation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
All right, thanks, Shannon. All right, with that, we're going to open this one up to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? Now's your opportunity. All right, hearing none, we're going to close public comment and bring it back to council. Does anybody have any questions?
I just want a clarification. I think I'm understanding it right, but for the tourism, they're for another 5,000.
They are.
Full of 9,500.
They are, yeah, yeah. And they will only spend that if they get, yep, yep. But we've also heard people who are interested in applying for the grant. We've just already spent over the four. So yeah, they're very excited because we've never spent down these dollars, but for the first year we already have and it's only April. So very exciting.
This is just allocating more budget. This isn't approving those mini-grant applications. That's already done.
Yeah, they have made that recommendation to you, but we don't usually cut checks until it's like, it's a dollar-for-dollar reimbursement. So they have to show proof of their expenses for the events.
Couple of questions for, sorry, go ahead. Um, just a couple of questions with the sewer.
Yeah.
Um, what, did you say where the 200 is coming from?
Yeah, so last year, uh, council uh, budgeted 1.3 million dollars for the aeration project. That was split between um, sewer, just general sewer contributions and also American Rescue Plan dollars. Um, so as we do with a lot of our bigger projects, especially in the sewer fund, we applied for a Department of Local Affairs Energy Impact Grant to offset some of our costs. Um, so we got $600,000. So we had initially um, put American Rescue Plan dollars, which are federal dollars that we received and actually need to be appropriated by the end of this year, 2024, have to be spent, I think, by the end of 2027. Um, so it'd be coming from grant dollars that were previously appropriated but not used due to state funding that we received. Yeah.
It's not even coming out of our enterprise fund balance. It's.
Yeah, it's, it's.
But it's, it's, it's.
Yeah, it's grant revenues we need to spend, but yeah.
It's reserved for specific things already. So we, we're good there.
Absolutely.
We've spent a lot of money, as you just said, with the sewer. Are we like, I guess I look at this as like, this was not in the budget.
Right.
And it's only April. So it's like, how, like, why, why didn't that come up on our radar earlier to put it into the budget?
Yeah.
And also with that is what's next? Are we?
Yeah.
We done with the big expense of the sewer because we've done just so much in the last couple of years?
Yeah, yeah. And you know, it actually did come up during budget. You know, we focused our efforts on some of the other larger projects. So the aeration project was obviously a big one last year to where if we ever needed to turn on the second ditch and operate at the same time as the other one, we could. So that was 1.3. The H2S was a significant project that we needed to accomplish. So really, we were just kind of waiting to see where those projects fell as far as like total cost. And um, we got the grant funding, but we also saved money on some of the cost of these projects as well. Um, we're still waiting for a change order of, I think, a deduction of around 200,000 for one of the H2S projects. Just because, you know, contractor had savings, we had savings throughout the process. So that will just go back into the sewer fund balance uh, to be re-appropriated by the council in a later year. So yeah, we've had, we had a little bit of both. We had more revenue than we initially anticipated. Then we also had savings on the project, which is always a good thing for sure.
And 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 I think it's a great question because typically we want to go through that during the budget process, but and we did have the request. We just held off because we had those big projects and we wanted to wait till we got to the point in those to make sure that to make sure they didn't, you know, sometimes added expenses come.
Right.
Because something unforeseen, we anticipated uh, the, as as we got further along, we anticipated those projects that were going to be under budget. We wanted to get all the way to make sure, you know, there's a point at which, okay, now we know that we're saving this much and this much. Now we feel comfortable bringing this to you all before doing it too soon. And then another project, you know, goes all the way to budget or some unforeseen thing goes over. So so a little bit off on timing, not something new, something we just held off on doing till we got far enough along.
I appreciate it. That's fair enough. And what?
And I I would probably, yeah, probably just add to kind of on that note, whenever we do have potential savings that we want to reappropriate, we usually wait until we have a final number in mind until checks are potentially cut because we never know what the contractors could come back with. Uh, future projects, skate is a big one. Um, we have done a tremendous amount of work on the plant. The centrifuge is probably going to be the next biggest one, having redundancy for the centrifuge. And then we also still have uh, sewer lines that need to be replaced in the downtown core, one of which is in the budget this year to start along Greenway Drive and work our way um, south. And then we have some, you know, Maple Street, North Mesa Streets also in the budget. So we're chipping away. It's been, I mean, they are doing incredible work. The aeration, H2S. You know, some communities aren't even addressing H2S just because it's so expensive. So we're very proud of everything that's been done over there.
Shit, thank you.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
Uh, quick question on the 100,000 for supplemental engineering services. Does that equate to approximately 500 hours? I'm just, is there a way to equate that to, is that based on an hourly or is that? How's that budgeted?
It is hourly, yeah. Thank you. Yeah, we went through a entire RFP process, got qualifications. Uh, the committee felt really good about moving forward with SGM. So yeah, just whatever we do ask requests for, they work on and then will be billed according to that.
Can you uh, tell us how approximately how many hours, for lack of a better term, that bought us?
Yeah, I'm not su, we can look it up. Yeah, we'll, we'll look it up. Yeah. Yeah. And that's just, you know, we talked about during budget last year, it's just something to have and that'll go, you know, in just our engineering line item as well. But yeah, when things come up, you know, maybe we get ahead of the design, get it ready, more shovel-ready. So when we do go apply for grants, it's more competitive.
I do appreciate it was talked about during the budget cycle. So it's not new.
Right.
I'm just trying to equate to, does that give us 1,000 hours? I don't know what engineers rates are, or does that give us 100 hours as we look towards the future, how to budget?
Yeah.
As our workload continues to increase.
Yeah, yeah. And you bring up a good point. This is to help with capacity. You know, we have a great team downstairs right now. But yeah, as we more and more capital projects, this is to kind of help supplement those efforts.
You have to talk, Dan. I want to let the public know who's talking, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name is Dan Karas. I'm the Planning Director for the city of Fruta. We have, it's not exactly broken up into like you get 1,000 hours. It's based off tasks. Then we negotiate the price and they assign uh, a myriad of different personnel to it. So we've got a schedule of values from like the principal engineer that is 240 bucks an hour all the way down to uh, a surveyor at $69 an hour. So they assign those uh,
Menu of services.
It's a menu of services, but when we contemplated uh, going with SGM, what we really wanted to do is we wanted to get the like, the conceptual modeling done for a lot of these transportation projects that we need to do. And then use the horsepower of that private company to generate the actual construction sheets to go to bid. And so we're not really talking about using SGM from cradle to grave. We'll build the models like we have, but we don't have the, as many CAD technicians and designers that actually turn those into construction documents to be able to bid those documents. So that's, that is really the reason why we're doing what we're doing is to continue with all the actual design work, but be able to generate actual projects that are ready to be bid. So we can actually do like the right-of-way acquisition, the design, and then plan construction uh, pricing for what the engineered estimate would be with not only our department and SGM.
So to answer my next question was, this does not equate to an equivalent FTE because it's the range of services.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And I have a question related to this one then off that is, so I know we talked about it last year in budget. Are we, what is the long-term plan as far as contracting out? Because I mean, I know we've got projects about five and 10 years out. So is this something we're going to be looking at for budget? Well, some of us looking at for budget for this year. So that way we don't get farther behind, I guess. If we're talking about last year, we got behind. So how do we manage that for this next year's budget?
Yeah, this is a great question, Mayor, because and and that's, that's exactly why we're going this route is a mix because we could, we could look at one more position, but with the firm, we get such a variety of services for specific to various projects. And this was after kind of analyzing the team we have and where our strengths are. So like Dan mentioned, have really good strengths at getting the models and then the inspection side and 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 that side. But like, being able to keep up with designing all the projects, forbiddable projects and related to then go, you know, in the budget process, knowing exactly what, having better pricing of what we're budgeting before we're just estimating. And then we're into the year, then we go to bid and then so trying to do that ahead of time. It's going to be, it's going to be dependent on as we narrow down and keep updating our five-year capital improvement plan. And we, we've made some significant strides with that. And as we narrow that down, it'll help us kind of see, you know, what mix is good each year. But for now, we definitely feel like we'll get more for, you know, having this mix of the team we have in addition to the those services versus one position um, that might be limited in what they can do. And we're still having to contract some of those pieces. So but it's going to be, I I don't want it to sound like year by year, like we'll just fill it out and see, but we will have to, we will be evaluating that based on each year's projected projects. And we also feel like, if you remember during the budget process, we talked a little bit about the fact that we're hit, we were hitting a point in time where we had some of these capital projects that based on supply chain, based on actual availability of contractors and things like that, that got delayed more than, you know, than what we've been used to over a couple, two, three years. Uh, that we had those kind of getting behind and it wasn't necessarily because we weren't designing them. Some of those were for other outside factors. But then we're trying to keep moving on the plans for in the strategic plan and in that capital improvement plan. So we do have a, we do have a buildup of a lot of capital projects at one point in time. And so we saw this as a good opportunity uh, to try and get over that hump without necessarily just adding staff. What it's also going to do, it also gives us the ability though, when we, when things come up where we are maxed out, but we don't want to, you know, push a project off. And I don't mean like the construction of a project off, but as Dan mentioned, we have a lot of transportation projects that are, that are coming up, but there's so much work that has to be done prior to construction. And this, this gives us that ability to have some extra assistance to prepare those things before we are able to go to construction. So it, it's going to be something that we discuss probably each year related to the budget process, at least for the foreseeable three to four years, right? And 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 determine the level of where we're at with the projects, what projects we want to make sure to tackle that are in the council's strategic plan and those things each year.
Oh, I have. Anybody else have any questions or comment?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move to adopt resolution 2024-12, amending the 2024 budget to appropriate funds in the general fund, marketing and promotion fund, and the sewer fund for capital projects, purchase professional services, and special projects.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Shannon, would you please poll council?
Councilor Hansi.
Yes.
Councilor Bremen. Councilor Perser. Councilor Williams.
Yes.
Council Cry. Motion passes six zero.
I don't get.
Oh, Council Miller.
Get a vote on this one.
I was so confident and then I know. Council Miller.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right. It's a bummer. We don't have Deb here tonight, but.
She would be, her head would be turning.
She's going to be reading, she's going to be listening to you on the audio going, what the heck is going on here? All right, with that, we're going to move into our administrative agenda. Uh, so we've got our building, uh, Fruta Building Division updates. We've got Dan Karas, our planning director, and John Anderson, our building official here. And it looks like Henry Hemphill is coming up to present first.
Not bringing your assistant?
Everybody's throwing me off.
Coming from the back. You didn't even see me back there, but I was there. No, it's up here running the techno.
All right.
All right.
Hey, Mayor and.
Formerly John, Chief Building Official, who's going to kind of kick off this uh, presentation and then uh, some of us will come in and join in the conversation, but.
They're going to be dancing.
Well, it's been one year for our building department and uh, the good news is we've done an awesome job.
Pudding is delicious.
I attribute that to our team. We have and Wooten, our electrical inspector.
Senior.
Ames. Ryan, Ryan Hope. Electrical inspector. Matt Carson. Mike Mossbury, senior inspector. And Karas, my astute supervisor. Henry Hemphill. The uh, Manor.
And Miss Kelly. Miss Kelly.
Rock star of our group.
The best for last.
So we have this new title of Fruta Built and that was actually. Figured out by Dan. I'm trying to get the right word. He was his idea and it was a good, good way to start a. A new lingo in our department. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous, so.
Be nervous.
We don't give anybody a hard time. Shouldn't be nervous.
Wasn't nervous until I told I was going to do it myself. I'm like, what? So the first year of our achievements, we start with. We became fully operational in a shorter period of time than we actually had anticipated doing it. We were looking to start in April. And we started in February. And we were very successful jumping in with both feet. And we had contractors who didn't like us. Now all they want to do is build in Fruta. So again, we go Fruta. Um, we do embrace the values of the city of Fruta and we're learning as we go, the values and how we want to be as employees and part of the community. So our whole team is working on that and we're going to get better and better at it every time we do something new. Customer service, the biggest thing in construction. We provide it, they love it, they can't say a bad word about it. Being a partner with all different departments in the city, working with public works, working with water treatment plant. We're here to help them. We have expertise and we're really, you know, excited to share that with them when we can. Did some reach outreach, I should say. We went to the HBA a couple of times, went to the Fruta Academy. Went to the Fruta Chamber of Commerce. And we did a meet and greet at the base camp. It was really good. Good beer. Also, we decided to do some co-training ourselves. We had ICC instructors come out. And the courses we offered were actually new, basic code analysis, basic energy codes. And along with doing that with normal contractors and inspectors, we also included CMU students. And inviting them to attend free of charge. So it was really exciting and it was outreach and they loved it. They all got credit for the classes.
How many did you get, John?
I think it was a 12 total.
Great. That's awesome.
Now, this is about cloud permitting. I'm going to let Henry jump on in.
Thanks, John. So as many of you know, we did launch in February last year and leading up until that time, we were. Going through the kind of training process to have a cloud-based permitting software. And we felt like. Cloud permit met all the, the goals that we had that we wanted. Not only to achieve kind of the building department transparency and processing permits and plan review, but also. On top of that, it does planning related elements like annexations, rezones, subdivisions. Anything like that is all electronic in the same cloud-based platform. In addition to that, there's also a licensing mechanism that we use to process short-term rentals. And we're getting ready to do a launch on special events. That's in the works right now and ready to rock and roll probably a month or two from now. And then code enforcement is also an element on that. So you have the building department, plan review, licensing and code enforcement, all in this cloud-based permitting software. I think one thing that I really like about it is the fact that there's not a whole bunch of paper coming in and us having to keep track of. The paper copies have those stored, reviewed and then have to keep those for an extended period of time. I find that very valuable. We can just go in and click on this wherever we're at and we log in and we can see where our project's at. That's something I really enjoy about cloud permit. Among other things, but there's an element of cloud permit where we can do plan reviews. They can request inspections through cloud permit, take payments and then obviously record keeping. So it's all of kind of a all-in-one platform, cloud-based permitting software that anyone can use. That's part of an application or a staff. We can keep track of, of everything going on. Once we launched kind of a few months after we did, Kelly and I took part in an online webinar hosted by Cloud Permit. To talk about small communities utilizing cloud permit. Since then, and we were the first one in Colorado to use cloud permit. Now there are seven live. Communities with two kind of ready to go. Yarray and Grand County are the two that are getting ready to go. And then there's some other smaller communities involved too. But I feel like we kind of set the tone for what's going to happen in the future with communities in Colorado. And they're all, you know, in a bunch more states. They're in 40 states right now and in Canada, but I think we're setting the tone in Colorado. For online permitting software programs. And so really proud of that. Obviously, like John said, it took a team to kind of launch this and get it going. We were kind of learning as we went, as we launched that, but no paper copies. And a great way to track and review projects as they come in and all projects associated with our departments.
Back to John. So we did mention working with the city on some of the city projects. And the pitches we're looking at are down on Mulberry. We did the help with the fire pit and the lights. That was Jen Wooton actually helping on that personally. Second one is the bio lab. It's a machine that is. It reduces orders, odors from the water treatment plant, which is amazing. You can think about that. I can't believe it, but it says, they say it works. The third thing is our new park. This is Reed Park. It's being built right now and it's going really well. These are some of the numbers we had for inspections this year. We did 3,708 inspections, 75% residential. And 279 solar-related inspections. It's a lot of inspections if you think about it between three people, you know, two and a half, three. Building permit fees, I think Dan would like to weigh in on this. Would you then? He's a numbers guy.
Shannon's the numbers guy. But thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Dan Karas. I'm the planning director for the city of Fruta. I just wanted to make sure that, like, that the council was aware that, like, we tried to get as close of a comparable for a year. You know, so we could actually budget. We obviously, you know, that like we started a little blind with 75% cost recovery was like the number we were shooting for. This comparison represents, I think, an accurate depiction of what we can anticipate revenue-wise, which our department. If you take out the one-time costs is right around 350 grand. So it's about a 71% cost recovery with the. With the plan review fees and with the building permit fees. That doesn't come close to the, the rest of the, the fees that are levied just by the planning department, impact fees, like application fees and the like. This is just specific to them. So when we're using a metric on like how much we're taking in versus how much the department costs, it's about a hundred thousand dollar subsidy. And so that is within the ballpark of what we talked about originally, which was 75%. There are some, I think, things we can contemplate going forward as far as like all the different types of. Of fees that we collect. We do not collect a, a plan review fee on residential homes, which is pretty common in the industry, but we don't do it. So we just review those plans as they come in and we rely upon them to pay for the building permit. In order for us to cost recover on those applications. So a little different because with commercial. Projects like you charge a plan review fee and then like, then they come and pick up the building permit. And so there's, there's two points of cost recovery there instead of just one. For the service. So there are some nuances associated with this, but this is the, the closest that we can get. It is. It's kind, it's validated based off of the, like the around $250,000 that we took in. If you minus out the 27,000 bucks that Mesa County collected. In 2023, from January 1 to February 20th, like we are right in that ballpark. So this is representative of the number of inspections we would do. It's representative of the amount of money that we're likely to take in, if obviously the pace and consistency with the projects that are coming in presently stay the same.
Thank you, Dan.
So we have next is some of the projects that we'd be going through and some of the part of the inspections we do on these projects. For example, on residential, we're looking at underground plumbing here. These are just basic ideas of what we look at throughout the process. What we're looking for is at the right materials. Does the water flow? Does the sewer flow? Is it in the right place? That's the typical inspection for a single-family home on a residential. The second one is slab foundations. And not only are we looking at rebar, but looking at location, we're looking at, is it the right height, elevation? Is it in the right place? Is it the right design? As you can see, framing can be either really simple or a little bit complicated. This one's a little more complicated because it's got two stories. Pretty straightforward though. That's what we do on a framing inspection, exclusively framing. Picture adjacent to that is electrical, what size wire gauge? How many? Wires are going to go in there? How much conductors are going to be used? It's all being counted and accounted for. This last picture on the left is our first CO. We issued it, our first stone in three months after we opened, 90 days. The fastest they ever built a house. They're really impressed. And this is their CO right next to it. Commercial, we've got some big projects in town going on right now. This is a picture of the muse. It's 50 units. It's pretty much on schedule. It looks like they're going to be done by October, 100%. This is kind of the early stages of framing and. Yeah, similar page to the first one, second one. The West Aspen Apartments going really well. This job is going to be done in. August. That's their goal. Again, early stages, different phases. And last but not least, the Latter Day Saints Church, the ELS is going really well. They're looking to be done by August as well. And this is some pictures on the inside of the framing. Job going really well, going at a smooth pace. Should be done on time, on schedule. So what we have coming in the future is next year. Code updates, we're going to go to the 24 codes. And it's traditionally done every other code cycle. So we're on the 18 now. The 21 is currently available. But stay in line with the state and the other jurisdictions. We're going to go to the 24. So we'll be looking at meeting with you folks and going over those code changes in the near future. The books are just now coming out, so. It'll be 25. Um, we have a lot of amendments from the previous billing department that we're going to clean up. Most of them have actually eliminated. So we'll be talking about those as well. Amendments, meaning taking things out of the code. We're going to put them back in. Our, our main focus is customer service. That's what we're here about. We're here to provide customer service to the contractors and take care of the community. And that's really what our focus is. That's our value and we plan on doing that to the best of our abilities, continuing. And again, outreach, more students from the schools, more classes, more education. That's what we're going to work on. Think that's it. Any questions?
You don't have a question slide? That's Henry. I know that's Henry.
Where did that go?
Thank you, John. Who, anybody want to start with a question? Go ahead, Matthew.
So out of curiosity, so I see code updates and understanding the cycle. Will that align with Mesa County? So we don't kind of get out of sync with our neighbors.
Yeah, the idea here on the Western slope and like. I'll use a. What's the town up there? Montrose, they're on the 2003 code. So they're way out of whack. So what the, the state's trying to do is get everybody on the same codes. And by staying with Mesa County here locally. That would be ideal because it just makes it easier for the contractors and for, you know, continuity of inspections.
But yeah, they are. So Mesa County will be moving to 2024 as well with the city of Fruta.
That's correct.
Only other thing is I just want to say kudos. I know there's a lot of pudding. Kind of go through and you guys have done a great job doing that. Thank you.
You bet. To be honest, the guys who didn't want to work in Fruta, they want to work in Fruta. That's all I hear.
A lot of us have heard.
How do we get a job? How can we work in Fruta? You guys do Loma? No.
John, that answers, or that leads me into my question is. You said that earlier, hey, everybody wants to build here because of how smooth it's running. So I was going to ask Dan that because with 3,700 inspections. What does our capacity look like for your department? Moving forward, because if we've got more building coming, how does, are you, John, you're in charge tonight?
How you doing?
So how's, how's your capacity?
So right now, right now we have two full-time inspectors, including myself and Jen, Mike Mossberg and James Cope is part-time. If, and we will grow, we're going to grow. There's more projects coming up. The idea is to get these folks, you know, to in a permanent position, you know, allowing the full-time employee. Commitment from the folks. But yeah, we are going to grow. We're going to have to. Um, I don't think this year is going to be any changes, but next year is probably be a big consideration.
How many inspections are there on the, on a common residential home? Just kind of get an understanding of like. It looks like 130 residents are in process, 38 issued COs. So there's.
About 20 to 30.
Okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha. And so, and if I'm understanding this right, on your residential slide, you said 130 new residences, that's in process from. Shovel in the ground to CO, but and then we, 38 new units purchase or on the market is what the COs means, right?
So the permits were issued for those, that 138, I think it is. I didn't look at them, sorry. And we've issued 38 COs. So people actually occupy those buildings now. They're, they're done, they're complete.
Perfect.
With the muse, there's going to be 50 at one time, so.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I too want to give you guys major kudos. I only hear good things and which has been very satisfying. Is there anything that you like that we can do to help you? Is there any, any hurdles that you're seeing that? That we might help alleviate?
No, I do appreciate you guys' support as it is right now. Um, there's a few things that I know that was not being. Traditionally or historically called in other areas locally here. And we might want to address some of those things, like the high water tables here in Fruta. And we're going to talk about those as we do the code adoptions to start pursuing, doing those code requirements. And by that I mean vapor barrier underneath the slab. Very important water, concrete absorbs water, it sucks it up. So it does damage to LVT flooring, carpet. So yeah, we're going to, it's in the code book and we're going to try to start enforcing that as well. We want to talk to you guys, folks first, you know, so you're not getting hit with, what's going on? So it'll be a team effort. And that's our, kind of our goal at this time.
Yeah, I just can't thank you all enough. Like, it's just been such a success story and just.
Well, it's because of you guys. We're here. So thank you. I gotta say one more thing. Kelly McLean, she's a rock star and I missed her at the very end there. I'm really bad about it. So. She's a rock star.
She'll remind you of it, I'm sure.
I know. That's why I'm reminding her now. Hey, thanks, Kelly.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, Mayor, members of council, I, I just wanted to say while we have, while we have John and Jen and Mike and James here, I, I definitely want to, I get to see him on a regular basis, but. I definitely want to thank them for not a successful year, but a successful each day. I mean, they really. Put a lot into this and it's, and then their support within being within the planning and development department with, with Dan and Kelly and Henry. Makes a big deal. It's fun to see, you know, when you think about cloud permit and what was, what was covered earlier. It's fun to see on almost a daily basis, Kelly or one of the, one of the other members of the team around the counter on the outside. Showing somebody how to use it. So it, you know, it's never been one of these, hey, it's online, there's instructions online, go figure it out. You know, they still walk people through it. They help them learn so that they can use it. The next time, but also use it during the process because it's a super convenient for, for those developing or going through the process to be able to. From the review stages, see all the comments in one place. To the, you know, status of permits or setting up meetings, paying their, their, their fees, all those, all those things. So that's, that's, that's really awesome. Also, just as you all know, it was, it doesn't feel like that long ago, even though it's been over a year that we were gearing up for this and, and that was challenging. I mean, when you do something different than is being, that's then it's been done for 40 plus years. And you're the first to do it in the, in the valley. You know, we, we definitely all shared those thoughts of we've got to be successful and it's because of this team that, that we were successful and are successful and will only be, you know, continuing to, to grow. On that foundation. And then what you see as far as what John covered of what's coming up. Those will be future workshops. So we'll be going through some of that as we prepare and as we engage with the community and make sure there's plenty of notice and understanding before those are adopted. Yeah, thank you.
One more question, since you're talking about cloud permit. So how's that helped your team, Dan, as far as? One more question, since you're talking about cloud permit. So how's that helped your team, Dan, as far as time commitment? Because it sounds like saving your team time and it took for other projects. So how's that affecting the the workload?
Um, absolutely. I mean, it's definitely improved the workload. I mean, we have, we're probably turning around. Residential site plans and the residential plan review fees within a few days of them being submitted. I think the, the big thing, um, Mr. Mayor, that like goes into just our processes that it's been simplified. Uh, because it involves the planning department. In the past, like they would come and get a planning clearance from us. And that's when we would charge the impact fees and and like the planning clearance fees and all the aforementioned fees that we talked about earlier. And then they would go to Mesa County and if they miss just one form, they're coming right back. And all of those uh interactions were at the counter. And so I would say comfortably, I mean, I'm not always up there, but like we have. Probably reduced the amount of folks that are coming into the office uh to apply for planning clearances or for building permits. Uh, because it's not a complete digital space, even at Mesa County by a pretty significant percentage. And so that helps us because we're not at the counter, we're, we're spending time actually doing the plan reviews and setting them up. And then we're only issuing one permit. And so we don't have a planning clearance anymore. It is just a building permit and it has all of the um, all the fees that are levied against a residential house or a solar. Application or a commercial building. And then it is uh, it is then processed and we process those in planning and in building. And so, you know, really the responsibility of. The building department is to do the plan reviews, set up the inspections and issue the permit. Which is a, a pretty significant reduction of the amount of time that you'd have to otherwise take at the front counter in another jurisdiction if they were doing the actual building permits themselves. So. Saves our contractors time, it saves us time. And then we get dispatched each morning with them self-initiating, you know, those uh, those inspections. And so they get to pick from. Uh, from two schedules, an AM inspection and a PM inspection. And so you talked about efficiency earlier. A lot of times like we would, we would miss out on an inspection because we couldn't compile all of them. And so when they're out there. They can initiate. So if say it's a sewer and water or say it's a sewer and water and foundation. Like they can initiate all those inspections and pass them. So there has, there's less trips going out there, which is less fuel being spent and less time. And then. One thing we, we didn't mention to put on the actual um PowerPoint presentation, but I take it very seriously is we're essentially. The custodian of private property owners' buildings that they own. And so we take that. Uh incredibly seriously. So if we get core request, we have all their inspection logs, we've got their. Uh, their permit itself, we've got their site plan, we've got all the things that are associated with their building and then they can come and access that information. Why I think that's really important is that it's a level of service we can continue to provide. So at the end of each project, when they get a certificate of occupancy. We archive the project and any of the supplemental documents that are uploaded as a part of the building permit process and then it gets compressed. And uh then put in the cloud. And so it doesn't bog down our system like a lot of systems that are just, that are just loaded onto your machine. It's in real time and we can get access to that information in real time. So we don't have to compile a bunch of stuff if there are core requests. So. That's another kind of strength of cloud permit.
And how is that scheduling working? Like, are you seeing like same day requests for inspections or is it a couple of days out? Like, how are they? Are they scheduling those? What does that look like?
Leave the schedule as if they, if they um schedule it by six o'clock that morning. Is it six o'clock in the morning? So it's even better than I was going to say.
Wow, yeah, that's awesome. Do you see them doing that frequently or are they usually scheduling for a day or two out? Yeah. And are you saving that same, so you know, you were talking about mostly new building, but like if, if we did a roof replacement. Those same, those are, those are being archived the exact same.
Correct. Everything is. I think the only thing that we're kind of uh uh toying with the idea and I think that, you know, John will probably educate us all on this, you know. In the later months is the as-built for commercial buildings. To require those as a part of a certificate of occupancy and like where are we going to store those? How are we going to get access to them? And so is that going to be a requirement? I imagine we'll probably start thinking about that even for the residential buildings, just considering the fact that, you know, nothing costs a hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars. Right? Everything seems to be pretty expensive. And when that takes place, like there can be more litigation and like we need to make sure that like we, you know, take our record keeping incredibly seriously.
And I wanted to give you guys kudos on all the education stuff. I think with you partnering with CMU and how you guys can get involved um with that. And I. Even recommend if there's high school classes that could benefit from this. I mean, we do police academy. And so if you guys are doing this, and I know we do the Fruta Academy. I think it speaks a lot for our community that we care about who's here and who's working in our community. So I want to give you guys kudos on that because I think that's a. Big part of making Fruta the place that we're, we all live in is that we care about not just. What's happening in the planning department, but future generations that are probably working here at some, some point in their, their life.
Yeah, hundred percent. Yeah, we, we definitely, I mean, I want to echo what uh, what Mike was saying earlier. I mean, like this was a heavy lift, you know, I mean, it was a lot of work and. You know, a lot of that had to do with like hiring the right people, like we have the right people and. They all have their own areas of expertise, like we're held to a pretty strict standard, you know, with regards to like certifications for plumbing and for electrical. I mean. This is a serious business. It's people's property rights. It's people's property. And uh, you know, I mean, you got to have the right people to do that. So, you know, we certainly had uh. A number of years of experience in like, you know, different disciplines in order to get this across the finish line and. And so I couldn't be more proud. I mean, like, we're definitely, we're tickled that it's a year in and we're, we're getting some positive feedback. I mean, we certainly were bracing ourselves for some. For some bumpy roads, but uh, um, but it's tremendous success and it's to their credit for sure. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, we're going to move into our city manager's report.
Yes, I just had one update tonight. We, we, we will soon be going back out for recruitment of the finance director or finance officer position uh with. Margaret Sales pending retirement. Uh, she's planning on July first uh after, after forty-two plus years. I almost want, is it forty-three? Forty-one, sorry. Jumping out, but you know, only forty-one. And uh. We did, we did go out earlier this year, as you would have seen in our, in our weekly update and we extended it. When we started that recruitment, we wanted, we wanted to go out early this year. But we also knew that there were four to five other cities in the state that were struggling to require, to uh. To recruit for that same role. And uh, there was also some feedback about timing early in the year as there are a lot of people with the. Level of experience. We're looking at uh being pretty busy at uh the beginning of the year and and even some during some audit seasons and things like that. So. But we are about to repost that uh in, when we took a pause because of of not receiving a number of uh. The, the as-qualified positions or a- applications as we were looking for. We did then pivot and decided to recruit for our procurement and contract specialist. And uh Mackenzie Erickson was hired for that after going through that uh process and she started yesterday. And so we're on, she's being on boarded. She came from Mesa County uh Human Services. And actually uh has a lot of experience related to, to this position. So we're excited to have that role started. So she, you know, today was day two. But we're getting her uh. Oriented to the city, oriented to all the different departments. Um, because this will be a position that's, that is a huge resource to every department in the city. And uh, and then we're going to start that recruitment again. So if you, if you see that out there, uh, that. We're getting that going again and and we hope to be successful so that there's, our hope is still to have some overlap um with Margaret before she does retire. That's all I have for tonight.
Mike, what does that process, what does that look like when you're saying, like? How do you find that person?
Yeah, we, we actually go through quite a few channels. So there's a number of professional associations, including the International City County Managers Associate, Management Association. There's state associations. There's a. GFOA, which is a Government Finance Officers Association. We. Reach out through uh LinkedIn uh to people in those industries. We reach out through even. Local and regional or throughout the state, those who may be in governmental auditing, uh, because they would have, obviously they're auditing the governmental financial services. So they're going to have. Uh, that experience level, um, because they're coming at it from the other side. And a lot of people on those industries have, have been both on both sides, whether in the government finance or. Uh, on the auditing side. So we, we, we go out pretty extensively every, every, there might be some that I, that I missed if Shannon wants to add, but. We, we basically seek out all those, those different groups. Um, we pay for the ability to be on uh those newsletters, those, those, their websites. Uh, and uh, you know, also, also really getting out there. Uh, Shannon does a great job of reaching out to those associations, having them share it. In different ways, uh, making sure it's known through, through our own channels if, 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 if people are interested to reach out. So. But we, we knew it was going to be tough. Uh, last year, we even, there, there's even been some cities that. Have gone into contracting for that because of the tough recruitment. It's a tough time to relocate. It's a tough time to, you know, when you start thinking about it. And these are probably the smartest people uh to look at those numbers of, you know, making those big uh types of choices. So. We also though, um, because we like to be productively paranoid, we uh, we.
I like that.
Shannon has been working with um uh getting to know those different groups uh that are working with some of the other cities and talking to those cities. Uh, so that we could maybe in a similar fashion to the engineering services um. Uh, get to a point where we have that ability to work with a contracted service, either in an interim. Or in a, as we kick that off or as needed. It's not necessarily our plan long, long term. Uh, this is definitely a pretty, pretty demanding position, you know, in-house as well, but. We are looking at that, just knowing that the climate out there has been a little bit challenging, uh, not just for, for us. Fortunately, we've been successful at. A number of recruitments that other places have, have struggled with, but uh, this one. Uh, we hope to see some change with, as we, and we're making a few, a few changes to that job description title and things like that, so.
Cool. Thank you.
All right, is that everything, Mike?
That's everything. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, we're going to move into our council reports and actions. Let's start with Amy tonight.
Hi.
I mean, Shannon's jumping all over, so I figured I can, right?
I only have a couple, um, quick, just it's been asked of me a couple of times in the last couple of days. Uh, why can we not vote in person and in, for the Fruta election? Anyone?
The best people to answer that are downstairs. I, I'm not sure if that's.
And if it's a, let's, let's talk to Margaret and see answer, that's totally fine. But I just wanted to put it out there because it is something I've encountered a couple of times um. Over the last couple of days.
We're, what we're, what we need to confirm is if that's part of, you know how the, the state of Colorado uh has portions of the, like when the, you can. Take your packets out, turn them in, all those dates. But I'm not a hundred percent if, if that's a, a local decision or not, but it's ballot, but we can check and.
And then um, the Historic Preservation Board, we met Monday. I think we're going to be hearing some things about the Fruta Bridge. There's kind of some momentum, not necessarily just for, not from them, but. Kind of signed on on supporting efforts to try and rekindle interest in the. Fruta Bridge and getting access to it and maybe trying to figure out how to restore that a little bit. So don't be surprised if you hear some rumblings about that. They're trying to really get support together and try to get some things going. So there's going to be some more discussions around that, but that was the main topic of that meeting.
I could use the word rekindle.
Well, that was, they, they felt like it had kind of got, kind of fell to the wayside was kind of the. I don't, I think they would like way more enthusiasm from, from all involved. Oh, sorry, I missed the pun. I missed the pun. But I'm, gotcha. My bad.
That's what happens when she goes first.
Yeah, sorry, I'm a little, Shannon threw me off. I'm, I'm off. That's all I've got.
All right, all right. Thanks, Amy. Uh, James?
Nope, nothing.
All right, Matthew.
Um, yeah. Just a couple really short things. Uh, the sixteenth of this month is WCES. So conference for GJEB. Hope to see a bunch of you there and so we don't have to Photoshop pictures this time.
Just don't leave early and we won't have to.
You know, it's my fault. Fruta annual banquet is the thirteenth. So, I'm sorry, chamber banquet.
Best costume, circus costume.
Yeah. Yeah, so hopefully he's all going. Awesome. Um, and then Joel, what you talk about today?
Okay.
That's it for me.
All right, Aaron?
Other wearing a tiara.
Just one thing, uh, the ED at the, new ED at the museum started last week. Have you guys been in communication with them? Sweet.
Yeah, they um. I think we just got it on the schedule for Monday for them to come meet with Shannon and I, actually.
Glad we're having a good transition.
Yeah, good. What's that person's name? Oh, I'm sorry.
It's in my email. I don't remember.
Okay.
We'll go to you, Janine, and then you give your report and he'll look it up. How's that?
Uh, relocate, they relocated. They're not from the area.
I remember you saying that. I just wondered.
Yeah.
Uh, I wanted to see if we can maybe give the localism committee an update on. What we decided last at our workshop. Not all of the committee was there. I think it'd be. Nice if within that, um, we also gave great appreciation to the time and effort that they put in. And as we discussed, that we're committed to the concept and going to work on the mechanics of that from here on out. The people that were there, some of the people that were there reached out to me personally and used words such as they needed to process what they saw that night and things like that. So I had. Some pretty serious like listening um time with some of them. And I just think it would benefit us and then if we. If you guys are on board with this idea of making sure that they feel very appreciated for their time and effort that they put in into that and maybe a letter from us that we all could sign. And just sort of give them. The scenario of how we're moving towards this idea because it, it didn't. Come off super well last, last week with them, so.
I think that's the challenge with some of these are like, okay. We need time to process too. And so it's not just them processing, it's this group processing. So some of that's probably that communication I think you're talking about too, is that. Not every decision's like a quick. Making that, but we're taking that input. So no, I think it, it'd be good to do something. You know, if it's a letter, that's, I mean, that's easy. With that, I'm on board if everybody else is.
That's all.
Janine, I have a name. She, Shenna Hayden.
Hayden?
Hayden.
Hayden.
I think it's She- I think it's Shenna. It, it's spelled one way, but not said that, that same way.
All right, great. Thank you.
So we should direct staff to get the.
This is Hayden.
For us, so.
So.
They'll know on Monday.
They will know on Monday.
All right, thank you. I thought I'd save the best for, well, second to last.
Uh, unfortunately, I have nothing. My, my meeting got bumped till next month, so. You lucky people. Yeah, for me, for never. I might go for fun and. That's it.
All right, um, so uh, I didn't, I didn't have any board meetings, um, but I did get to. I was. Honored to have our mayor pro tem with me today at uh Monument Ridge Elementary for their fifth grade class. And so they wanted to learn about what a mayor does. They're going through. Was it Townsville? What is it? Mayorville? Now, what was it? It's a class that.
Townville or something.
Yeah, that, so they're going to be meeting with the uh, a police officer and they're just talking about all the different roles. And so they go through and they each get assigned a role for that. And so they. Wanted to hear what our role is for mayor. And then we talked about council and their role.
You told me you're just a pretty figurehead.
Yeah, I told. Although Matt told him that and I blushed a little bit, so. You know, it was a pretty good meeting, but those are always fun to get out to because.
Not as good, not as good as he does.
Um, but when you think about it, they're our future leaders. So it's good for them to get into roles like that and just to learn about what happens in a, a city and government. So that was.
Your favorite question you got.
Your favorite question you got.
What was my, what, how long did you work at Nickelodeon? Oh, wait, no. How long did you work at Disney? Wait, which one of the, which one of those questions about, hey, which side of the camera were you on for Nickelodeon? I mean, Matthew more or less stole the show because once they found out he used to work for Nickelodeon and Disney, then every question was.
I think the question was, which was your favorite question?
Those were my favorite questions. Oh, all right. Um, I think the one, so the, the kids ask a lot of great questions. And so someone were like, what are the toughest things you, you have to do on council? And so we talked a little bit about some of the meetings that we've got. They talked about, hey, do you do stuff with the other local governments? You know, so I mean, the other favorite one was probably, what was your favorite color, right? So we had some of those, but probably 90% of the questions were like actual questions that were related to, hey, how does this job do? Or how do you handle citizen complaints? You know, or you know, what, what do you do when you get phone calls or, you know, things like that, but.
What grade was this?
Fifth grade.
Oh, good.
So, so no, I think, I think it's great to get out and get in, in, go to those opportunities because it's just a way to educate. Again, if I'm following the planning department's lead, I mean, they're bringing in and doing education on stuff. I figure we better keep up. We have a hard time keeping up with that. So Ken, you sure you don't have anything else to add? Because I know you.
Nothing.
This would be your last opportu, well, second to last opportunity.
Nothing, nothing to add.
All right, with that, the time is 8:13 PM and we are adjourned.